Good. So yeah, this meeting is recorded now and it might be shared in other platforms like social media and stuff, so um just to put it out there. So this is recorded, this will be shared in other places. Um also, some people came a little later, so I'm gonna introduce Maria from Washington Square Association instead of Trevor because Trevor is on vacation, so uh I don't know how to point Maria, but like, yeah. That's Maria. Thank you very much. And I think we all know each other already because the rest of us were in the last meeting. So, thank you very much. Um. Great. So today, uh I again made a rough a- agenda so that, you know, uh we can conduct the meeting as efficient as possible. So first, uh I wanna do some recap about what happened over the two weeks because our last meeting was two weeks ago and even though it's been only two weeks, quite a lot of things happened. So it's nice to um see happen again.
Very well.
He's coming in, so. Uh yeah, so after recapping the two weeks, what happened, uh reviewing, um I'm gonna share some, oh, because um there was an a quite violent artist against artists just because of umbrella. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of that, but like, I have some recordings to share. Um and after I prepared questions to uh each of the organization and I also collected some questions from some of you. Um so you know, uh we will communicate because last time the the point was sharing our different perspectives, from different positions, but for this, I really need to about what we can actually do from now on and like, like in order to make a progress, you know, like which parties should communicate to each other. So we'll hope this meeting's gonna give us some progress for that. Okay, so, oh, so before that, I'm gonna just go the guideline which I already sent in the meeting, but just please be patient with me, it's important. So as I, the focus of the last meeting was to hear each other's voices from different parties. For our second meeting this time, the the one we are having right now. The focus is on the actual process and communication to solve the only issue in Washington Square Park. Please note, our approach is not to like win over another uh like one party beating the other parties. That is not our approach for this time. I understand it is frustrating when the problem is not solved quickly, but we can make a solid positive change in that way, I agree. So we will, so this is specifically for Max. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read this part of the uh email I sent, but I'm just gonna repeat anyway. Uh meanwhile, uh so here we also talk about the long-term solution, legislative legislative solutions. But still, we need a short-term solution as well. The situation in Washington Square got worse over the week. One artist got violent arrest just for an umbrella and another artist got a ticket also for an umbrella. Therefore, I will ask you again. Um please keep uh telling the NYPD to focus on actual problems the neighbors want to solve. We already talked about this on the phone call, but um we don't see the progress yet unfortunately. And it must stop, you know, we need to see the actual progress. So uh that's one thing to note. And the second thing, to conduct this meeting efficiently, I ask you to send me questions which I already received. Um I cannot guarantee if I can go over the additional questions, but if you come up any new question, you can type in the chat. And if I have a time at the end of the meeting, I might be able to go through the additional questions from the Zoom chat. So if you have anything, you can type up there. Um please note during the meeting, I will be the one mostly speaking to the organizations and officials uh and please refrain from cutting in until I finish uh going over all the questions I haven't received from you guys. Uh and as I said, yeah, you might have a time to type in additional questions, but um I will go over that if I have time at the end. Pretty much it. Uh is everything clear for you guys? Thank you very much. Alright, so I'm I'm just gonna go over.
Uh Marquez is here.
Yes, uh go ahead.
Thanks. There seem to be new folks who were not at our last meeting. I'm wondering if introductions or at least identification of associations would be helpful.
Right, thank you. Um I think this is, so okay, Andrew just joined, right, thank you. And is this Johan the living statue? Or someone else? So uh Johan Rosenstock?
Yes.
Yes, yes. The living.
I'd like to introduce Joan Rosenstock to the meeting. She is very active on the Community Affairs Committee of the Washington Square Association.
Oh, okay.
We're here together today. We just happen to be in different states.
Thank you. Okay, so both.
And she's also the treasure of the of the association.
Okay, understood. Thank you so much, Mark. Uh I think now we're good. Alright, so uh I'm gonna recap roughly and then also uh Eric will have more um detailed recap about the week, but um I will just go over the general that happened over the two weeks. Um so July twentieth, uh me, myself, uh was dancing in Washington Square Park performing and then I received a ticket for a small picnic side speaker. And even though uh my performances uh got shut down many times, in the past, the actual ticket was for the first time for me. And thirty, the end of last month, uh there was a artist's action protest um in Washington Square Park. And there were some media coverage uh by the News Movement Magazine and the etc, etc. And August second, exactly two weeks ago, we had this meeting. And also, every Wednesday, uh there's a artist's action going on every Wednesday six P M uh for like six minutes and it's read by Eric who's joining this. Um and also, we communicated with uh Grace from Washington Square Conservancy, so I had a one-on-one conversation with Grace and after that, um I believe Eric and Danny also had a conversation with Grace and discussed some possible statement to publish uh for the future, which we're gonna uh talk about a little today. And yeah, I think from here, I'm gonna pass on to Eric and I think he knows more details about the situation over the the tickets for umbrella and artist and everything. So Eric, if you could explain, that'd be great.
There we go. Hi, everybody. Uh I'm Eric Cook. I'm an artist in Washington Square Park. I've been uh coming here since twenty sixteen uh to the same spot here in the northeast corner. Uh thank you very much for uh hearing what we have to say. I've been acting generally as a spokesperson on behalf of uh many of the artists here in Washington Square Park. Um our goals, and I just wanna restate this because I think it's important that you hear it as many times as possible. Uh we have two goals. One is immediate relief from the over-enforcement in Washington Square Park of the artists. I'm not gonna go too much further into that. I mean, I'll talk more about the over-enforcement, but the second goal is uh to work on long-term solutions and in the last two weeks, we've had opportunities uh much like this meeting right here to uh to start the dialogue uh up again to uh find a situation that works for all artists or the community and for enforcement. Um I'm gonna speak briefly about the incident on Saturday, August twelfth here in the park. I was not here, but I've been in communication with uh the uh woman who was uh the center of it and her wife. Um on Aug- Saturday, August twelfth, the uh New York City Police Department uh in the course of trying to remove an umbrella from one of the First Amendment vendors here, beat and arrested a young black woman. Uh she's been in Washington Square Park for several years. She's a a friend of mine and has been a neighbor of mine for several years. It's a terrible situation, but I wanna point out that this is not irregular. I mean, it is irregular for a young black woman to be beaten here in the park, but it is not irregular for this to happen. It is emblematic. Uh Arjon and Aaron and Sharon and Kanami and Lucien and Antonio and Goofy Fruit and Vermejo are all First Amendment vendors who have been abused, harassed, assaulted in one way or another illegally. And uh so I think it's important not to get caught up on one really heinous, terrible event, but to just, I mean, we've been saying get off our backs for two weeks and it was God help me, the last intent I have to see that literally police on the back of a First Amendment artist here in the park. So um I just wanna say that this is not, I do, I do not think, and I've been out in the last two weeks, I'd say I've been out two-thirds of the days out here, and I do not think that uh that the enforcement has gotten worse since I've been out here, since we've been doing these regular actions. I think it is a steady stream of harassment, abuse, and intimidation. I think that our calling it out or increased and more vocally has brought it to the forefront, and so it seems as if it is more. But the fact that we're here sitting talking to you is because we got to a point where we simply couldn't sit around and take it anymore. So uh it is, it is a steady stream. Uh in fact, we've had several walkthroughs today uh that I've rung the bell at. I and let me say uh ringing the bell is sort of our uh emblem here. Uh we've had two weekly actions and at those actions, they're on Wednesday, six o'clock at six, we do six minutes at six o'clock. That's two, two full loops around the fountain. And we have a call-out that we do at uh at those walkarounds. I have a bell that I ring. The bell reminds us that the police intimidate and harass us and our voice speaks out to defend us. So uh last week, uh two weeks ago, our first one, we said get off our backs as an anthem of uh standing up. And then uh last week, uh after I'd had a couple conversations with Lieutenant Don Brown of the NYPD that runs the uh afternoon force here, uh we decided we'd show uh a little bit of grace and so instead of saying get off our backs, we said we are living artists. We made a personal affirmation. Uh but since then, uh we've had the incidents on Friday, we had seven incidents of harassment where the artist went out and called out the enforcement officer, seven. For minor, minor things, you're having the prices out or having something leaning against your stand on the ground. Things that do not call for the level of having three or four guns at it anyway. Uh the uh the intent of our actions is always peaceful, positive, and nonviolent. We are never ever anti-NYPD or anti-PET. I have spoken, as I mentioned, with Lieutenant Don Brown on several occasions. In fact, one was uh quite in-depth last a week ago uh today, uh what day is today? Wednesday. A week ago today, I had about a twenty-minute conversation where he laid out what his mission for the park is and I laid out what the collective mission of the artists in the park is, and it turns out that our missions run pretty parallel. Uh so long as uh we aren't uh adversarial. And at this point, uh I thought that we had a some kind of a beginning of a conversation, but that that was last Wednesday and on Friday, we had the seven uh actions of harassment and then on Sunday or Saturday, Friday, we had the harassment, Saturday, we had the abuse. And uh Sunday continued harassment. So um we, uh if you can please, uh talk to somebody. This is what we're, we're all gathered here today to try and find a solution and I know that the, that that it's not gonna happen today or whatever, but uh somebody can, somebody can talk to somebody and tell them to back the fuck off. And I'm sorry to use this language, but I'm seeing it every day and I'm tired of having to call it out. And I'm tired of having to talk to my friends to call it out. And I'm sorry if I got a little overzealous and passionate, but I want you to see in my eyes how in earnest I am about this issue. Um I'm just gonna finish up real quickly here. Uh we are a group of about twelve, I'd say about twelve leaders right now. We're representing uh just about as many of the First Amendment vendors that we have in the park here, uh which is much more than twelve and much more than you would see here on any given day. Uh we have been uh doing a lot of outreach in the community, which is highly exemplified by Kanami's work in keeping these ongoing meetings going. Um and we've been expanding. Uh several of us have been in conversations with um Grace at the Conservancy and she's helped us reach out to the association and some other groups as well. So as well as people in uh within our community doing uh outreach work as well. Uh we just started a mailing list where we do a uh weekly blast of updates and information. Yeah, this, this organization or this collective that we're talking about is only three weeks old right now. And so um we're just at the beginning of getting our communications force together and our uh, the only thing that we sort of link together on is our Wednesday actions and we cling to those. And uh we do not have daily actions for some of you who may uh assume that we're having daily actions. We don't. But if I am in the park and I see harassment and abuse, I do call it out. And so I act on a daily basis. But I do not expect anybody else. I don't call anybody else in to act. I don't expect any support on any of those individual actions. If I get it and we have seen that we do get it, uh that is on an individual basis. The Wednesday six at six is the only group thing that we've got. That's it. I really appreciate your time hearing me out and and uh and I apologize for my outburst. Uh I'm happy to take any questions either here or via email or through Kanami. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go mute.
Thank you so much, Eric. Um so now I'm gonna play the video of the arrest Eric mentioned and also there's a video of another artist getting a ticket and you know, in case you didn't have a chance to see those footages, I'm gonna do the screen share. So bear with me, please. Okay, so, let's see. So this is uh Friday, August eleventh. Uh so Arjon, the artist is getting a ticket on this day for this blue umbrella and surrounded by some PEP officers as we see here.
Kanami, if I can step in here, there were eight, eight NYPD officers, including a lieutenant and five uh PEP officers, including a sergeant, a white shirt sergeant or lieutenant, whatever their rank is. Uh so there were a total of about thirteen, uniformed, uh more than half of them armed. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you for the clarification. I was not there on this day, so it's very helpful.
I was, in fact, uh I was in fact there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this all happened just for an umbrella and this is the same day, uh but different angle. Uh I don't have a sound for it, but like, yeah, as Eric explained, uh I see police officers armed. I see at least three, four of them, but I think many more out of the frame. Um, just like that.
His umbrella was confiscated and uh he was later given a ticket. They had threatened to arrest him. Uh but uh the artists in the park stood up and started chanting get off our backs, which drew attention to parkgoers. Drew the attention of lieutenant who talked to the officers and talked them out of detaining Arjon, who was also standing up for himself very well.
Thank you. So that's the ticket Arjon got, I think. And so this was Friday, August eleventh, and this is uh arrest over an umbrella which happened on Saturday, August twelfth. Use this one.
This video angle is a little unclear. Um I had taken some of this where they do the takedown and slowed it down on my Instagram. That one's posted. There are uh at least two other videos. I don't know, Kanami's gonna show them, that have a much better angle and a cleaner look at this uh incident.
Yes, I have another one. Uh I'm not sure if that's the exact video you meant, but this is another footage here. This one doesn't have a sound.
That is essentially the same video. I took that from Arjon. I just tried to slow it down in places like right here with the takedown. That slowed down about half so you can clearly see uh the force with which they used to take her down. Um and then there is another ten-minute video that's more from the front of the uh arrest and assault um that I'm trying to get right now.
I can share that too. Is it in your account? Did you post, do you think? Or maybe not. Think either this one or that one.
Uh Eric is indisposed with someone that came up his stand, stand right now, so he's away.
Sorry, I can hear you. Evidently, we had a hate crime happen in the park and uh so we're, there's a crowd of folks gathered around uh an individual who's being escorted out who evidently committed some form of hate crime. So my apologies for the distraction.
So I'm gonna stop for now. Great. So the first question from me to each organization uh is, were you aware of this, this incident? Uh I wanna hear, let's say, from Max from the city council, uh were you aware of this situation over the week?
Yeah, so I know, yeah, so I guess, yeah, I'll start with this, with this incident. Another council member was informed about it on Saturday and he called the 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 sixth precinct. He gave them, I don't, I don't know, I don't wanna say yelling, but he definitely, you know, came kind of affirmed talking to on Saturday, so you know, he was made aware of it right away and you know, he called the sixth precinct uh immediately. And you know, yeah, told them that, you know, this wasn't okay and called them out on it. And then in terms of just general updates, is that okay if I give now also some general updates on the policing or should I? Should I wait?
Sorry, I, I have a little.
You having trouble hearing me?
I mean, I do hear you, but the voice is a little fuzzy. Is that only for me or is?
I think it's me for you. I can hear Max just fine. Kanami, would it help if Max repeated what he said already?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so yeah, I'll, I'll talk later, I guess. And yeah, so just, you know, the council member was made aware on Saturday. Someone sent him the video and he kind of immediately called the sixth precinct and spoke with them, told them it's not okay. Uh and then I guess just a more general update is that, you know, me and the council member are tomorrow. We are gonna be meeting with the sixth precinct tomorrow, going in person, meeting with the captain, meeting with the officers about this. Um I think, as Eric mentioned earlier, I think the fact that they want to meet with us or are willing to meet with us it shows like they know that they're getting a lot of bad attention for this. They know it looks bad for them. It's like they're trying to save face a little bit. But I mean, it's working. Like, you know, they're, they're, you know, they aren't always willing to meet with us. The fact they're willing for us to go in person to their, you know, to the precinct and actually talk with them, yeah, you know, means they know that something's happening. So that's an update on that. And then kind of a more general uh policing update is the council member's also going to be meeting with the deputy commissioner of the NYPD. So someone, you know, much, much higher up in the, in the department. Uh you know, one of the, you know, the second to most powerful person and the, and so they're gonna be discussing this as well. Uh I don't know if there's a date set for that meeting yet, but he is going to be meeting with the, with the deputy commissioner.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh I wanna ask the same question to the Conservancy. Grace, were you aware of this incident? And if you are aware, how soon you've got uh information about this incident?
Yeah, so I had actually seen it um just on my own personal social media um the, on Saturday. Um and so, you know, I became aware of it. Um and then it was sent to us by a number of people on this meeting. Um a couple of other individuals as well, um you know, had, had seen the incident um and sent it through to us and it's there are a lot of things that can be said about that video. Um I'm not gonna say them here. Um unfortunately, uh I'm kind of alone in the office this week. Um you know, it happens to be August and so Will, um our executive director, who again is the administrator as well of Washington Square Park, he is not in the city um at the moment. I have informed him what's going on. I've sent him, you know, a brief on what had happened. Um you know, a number of the social media posts. He's aware that we're having this meeting today. Um I don't know what his plans are for when he's back in the city. Uh I'm sure it will be to meet with everyone. That's a, you know, necessary to. Um I, I did just wanna ask because it was my understanding that at least the Saturday incident wasn't the local precinct. It wasn't officers from the sixth precinct. They were Eric, Eric, can you, were they sixth?
My understanding is sixth precinct.
It was, so it was Friday. It was the, it was the day before. That was not, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I just know there's been confusion about where, where the officers are coming from. So I just wanna make sure it's like um when the council member is able to meet with, you know, someone higher up outside of just the precinct level, that'll help there.
It was, it on, on Saturday, it was the sixth precinct. On Sunday, it was the uh the precinct, the first precinct and the uh twenty-first precinct, I believe. Um so they were not local. Um and then uh today, we have uh local precinct.
Thank you, Eric. Um so that's, you know, that's kind of where we stand right now. You know, I've, I've spoke with Eric yesterday. Um you know, after to, to kind of hear from him about the incident. Um so that's, you know, kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Uh can I hear from the community board too? Mark, please?
Uh the lead-up to this meeting is the first that I heard of it and the first that I've seen the video. I'm not sure if other board members were included in or not. And I shouldn't say other board members because I'm not a board member. I'm a staff. Um but I'm not sure what, if anything, reached the, the the leadership. I will certainly be bringing my notes back to them after this meeting. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I know uh Maria and uh Johan is joining us the first time, but I will still ask if you're aware about this issue in general and were you aware about the incident we just saw?
Um yeah, hi, this is Maria Passanati Dur. Yes, I am aware of the issue in general. Uh I haven't seen the video. Today's the first day I saw it. But I do want to say, since this is my first meeting here, I'm here to listen and learn from each of you so that I can go back to our board and and maybe contribute more positively to a solution on this matter. So today is a learning experience for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, so I'm gonna have uh Eric, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that um I've been working as a liaison uh between Destiny and her wife and uh so if uh you need to communicate something to them, um I have been granted approval to be a thorough fair for that. So um if you need my email and you would like to um have contact with them, I can direct that for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have more questions to. Thank you very much. And I have more questions to go over, but um I think this is important, so I'm gonna ask. Uh first, so what, I know we can talk about rules and issues and like we can talk here forever. But um it is, I think, really important for you to actually come down to Washington Square Park and meet artists and see the community. So I understand your schedule might not be clear right now, but I still ask if there's any available dates to come down to Washington Square Park. I know Grace did already, so it's not necessarily for you. But uh I haven't seen uh Mark, Max in forever, but you can be the one, Maria.
I know that, I know that Eric and Max connected yesterday um about getting the council member.
Kanami seems to be breaking up for me in the audio. Is anybody else experiencing that?
Yeah, for me too.
Yeah.
And now I can't hear you at all. I'm sorry.
Uh it seems like she's having connection issues. Let's just wait a minute or two until she comes back.
Looks like it's working on it.
Kanami, can you hear us? Kanami, we can't hear you. Um could you wave if you could hear us? Okay, I guess the audio went out.
It also seems very delayed.
It was going so well.